The Fort Bend ISD Board of Trustees Meeting is an open meeting for the public to observe the board conducting district business. Therefore, audience members may address the board during the designated Audience Items section on the agenda. If you have any printed materials you want to give to the board members, you must provide them to the Board Secretary Jane Kaiser or to me, and we will provide them to the board. We also ask the members of the audience be respectful of others and remain quiet during the meeting so everyone is to hear proceedings. For your convenience, microphones have been placed on both sides of the boardroom. Please speak directly into the microphone if you're asked to answer a question or address the board during the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Officer Aunt Taveros. The time is 6:01 PM. We have a presence of a quorum and the meeting has been duly called and notice of the meeting has been posted for the time and manner required by law. If you will all please stand for the pledges of allegiance and remain standing for a silent invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Please remain standing for a silent invocation. You may now be seated. Next on the agenda is recognitions.
Yes ma'am, if the board would join me in front of the dais, we will celebrate the accomplishments of our outstanding students.
Tonight, we are proud to recognize some students and talented staff members. First, we have our two Dulles Elementary students who were chosen to lead the pledges of allegiance tonight. Fifth graders Kirsten Succi and Chloe Staub are greatly respected and appreciated for their work ethic and the wonderful rapport they have with their peers and adults. Kirsten and Chloe participate in their school's broadcast team and were selected because they are student leaders who make positive contributions to the Dulles Elementary learning community. Please help us recognize and congratulate Kirsten Succi and Chloe Staub. And if you're here tonight to support these students, will you please stand so we may congratulate you? Next, through Fort Bend ISD's partnership with Chevron, Fort Bend ISD's 2016 Jason Argonauts were selected to participate in the National Jason Argonaut Program. Please help us recognize and congratulate Joran Rowling, a McAuliffe Middle School student. And Julia Dole, a Dulles Middle School Science teacher. One of the most unique and exciting features of Jason Learning's comprehensive approach to transforming K-12 STEM teaching and learning is the National Jason Argonaut Program. Jason's student and teacher Argonauts travel to research locations around the world to work side by side with scientists and engineers, many of whom they've come to know through Jason's curricula. In doing so, they become the eyes and the ears for their peers back home, experiencing firsthand what it's like to pursue a STEM career, sharing that knowledge when they return home to their communities, and making critical real-world connections to STEM topics. We are very proud of our returning Argonauts and celebrate their achievements and recognize them as STEM role models in our community. Their valuable learning experiences were shared in an article in our first edition of Fort Bend ISD's news magazine. And so, if you're here to support Joran and Julia, please stand and be recognized. Thank you so much, Dr. Dupree.
Thank you, Mrs. Porter. We now have audience items. First up is Catherine Bell. You can go to that microphone and just make sure it's turned on. You will have three minutes, and Mr. Burdine will time you and will let you know when you have thirty seconds remaining.
My name is Catherine Bell. I came here to speak on behalf of my daughter, her classmates, and their seventh-grade Texas history teacher at Dulles. I was told I could say his name. Is that right? Mr. Torres? My daughter's in seventh, in his seventh-period class where a situation with a male student occurred that resulted in Mr. Torres's removal. I understand the boy's feelings were hurt, and I understand him discussing this situation with his parents. I don't understand one parent being the voice for all parents. It seems one parent's voice has overridden many others. In contrast, when my father was a student, the teacher's voice was the most powerful. And I think that classroom behavior was a lot better back then. And now, in some ways, teachers or students are given more rights than teachers, and I think it's resulted in a lot of classroom misbehavior. And it just doesn't seem democratic to me, like a democratic process. What happened to Grace? I'm so thankful one or two wrong statements to one of my children hasn't removed me from my career as their mother. I'm often thankful for their grace and forgiveness. I try to teach them to give that to others, too. I don't believe this has been taught to them through this situation, and I don't believe grace has given, been given to Mr. Torres. As a past teacher, I empathize with Mr. Torres. After many years and much money spent in school, and after having proven himself already as a teacher, his career and way of providing for his family has been taken away without much due process. It's as if he started off guilty and has had to prove himself innocent, and this just isn't our American justice system. Sadly, the student at the center of this isn't thought of very fondly by his classmates anymore because of Mr. Torres's removal. He was a favorite of students and parents. I was highly, I was told you really, really want your child to get Mr. Torres when he's in seventh grade. And usually, kids aren't that attached to a teacher within two weeks that they would be upset about his removal. But he's that kind of charismatic teacher and good teacher that students want him there and want him back. In contrast, my daughter has another teacher who I haven't, you know, I'm not going to report on him, but I haven't been that impressed with him. When I met him at open house, he mumbled a lot. He gave her a zero for not putting her last name on a paper, and she's a straight A student. And he talked about another child's conduct to the parents in front of me, which was very awkward.
Thirty seconds.
Middle school students are sensitive because they're from elementary, but they're almost able to joke because they're almost in high school, and I feel like that's where the contrast happened. On the football field, he could probably joke with this young man, but in the classroom, because there are girls around, I don't, maybe Mr. Torres was mistaken that it was still okay, and then maybe the boy was a little more sensitive to it than Mr. Torres realized. But as a coach, he was able to, kind of, they're messed with each other, and the boy initiated the teasing and the joking with Mr. Torres, and Mr. Torres responded.
Time.
In a fun way.
Thank you, Mrs. Bell. Thank you for being here. Alfred Torres. Is Mr. Torres here? Okay. We'll save it. Okay. Next on the agenda is information items. Six A is the district planning update. Dr. Dupree?
Yes, ma'am. We actually have two items this evening, as the board has recognized, district planning update and an update on the fifteen-sixteen STAR performance and accountability. The presentation is designed as one seamless presentation, so we'll kind of move through both. Even though combined, there are only twenty slides, just to, so it should not be a lengthy presentation. So Beth Martinez, our Chief of Staff, is going to begin, and then she'll turn it over to some of her colleagues.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Dupree. Good evening, President Tassan, board members. I'm pleased this evening to co-present some information about our district planning process with Dr. Phyllis Hill, our Chief Academic Officer, and Dr. Megan Evans, Director of Innovation and Continuous Improvement. As we come to you this evening, we're going to take a high-level approach of looking at our district plans in terms of the goals and objectives that you all are reviewing for consideration this evening, and how that drives our campus and district improvement planning process and strategic planning process, as well as share information with you about the fifteen-sixteen STAR accountability data, and specifically about our TACE plans or plans for improvement for our IR campuses. As we begin, just as an overview, I want us to think about our planning process as a whole, and it really begins with the district, or the, I'm sorry, the State of Texas drives goals and objectives through the Texas Education Code. And the board's goals and objectives support the state's goals and objectives, and then it flows through that process as we begin to use the board's identified priorities and goals and objectives to drive improvement and strategy aligning upward for the most important thing, and that is our student performance improvements and organizational improvements. We also have components of our planning process that are district and campus improvement planning, and then, as I mentioned, you'll receive information about the TACE reporting as well. This spring and summer, as we started to receive our testing data, our accountability data from our campuses and district-wide, and we really started to drill down and look at those individual campus reports and the different tests and the data that we were receiving, we wanted to make sure that as we move into the improvement planning process that we really were putting some targets in place that were measurable and would drive student improvement. And we wanted to make sure that we were effective and efficient in our planning, and more importantly, that we were in compliance with what we are supposed to be doing from the State of Texas and based on our policy. So as we looked at those requirements and that criteria, we realized that we need to bring to you this evening, and again in October, and another conversation in November, about some specifics that we need to put in place for our improvement planning process here in Fort Bend. And so, Dr. Megan Evans will be sharing detailed information with you about our improvement planning process at the district level. As I said, she'll also provide accountability information and STAR data, and then she'll turn it over to Dr. Hill, who will further inform you about our IR plans at the campuses that are working with the TACE. And I introduce Dr. Megan Evans.
All right. Good evening, Board of Trustees and Dr. Dupree. As Beth mentioned, we're going to talk a little bit tonight about the district improvement planning process. Thank you. Starting primarily with your board objectives and goals, so that really is what is the seamless foundation for us. And we're going to also really be cognizant of the five priority identifiers, including leadership development, the assessments, the metrics, the dashboard. Those are pieces that all started to form the foundation of our district improvement plan. So what you're going to hear tonight looks a little different than what we've shared with you probably in prior years. So we are, as Beth mentioned, guided by local and legal policy. And one of the pieces of the policy for district improvement planning starts with a comprehensive needs assessment. And it's very clear in the policy what types of data that we utilize as part of the needs assessment. It will include various student achievement measures, disaggregated by gender, by student group. So we began that, the Department of Innovation and Continuous Improvement, in July of 2016. So we developed that comprehensive needs assessment, knowing we were still getting some data delayed from the state. But we started with that needs assessment, and from that needs assessment, district leaders, a district-level committee will analyze that needs assessment, kind of the current state of the student achievement in the district, and we will develop district performance objectives. And from those performance objectives, we will develop strategies to help us achieve those performance objectives. And those strategies are adult-based actions. So what are we doing at the campus and district level to help drive student achievement? One of the things that I want to mention is performance objectives by policy are required for all student groups and all achievement indicators. And it also specifically speaks to making sure that all student groups are fulfilling their potential. So we are really looking for some measurable, smart goals to address all of our students to ensure that they're reaching their full potential. So we start with the needs assessment. We develop the performance objectives and strategies. And one of the things I would like to mention is the campus improvement plan and the district improvement plan are mutually supportive processes and plans, and they complement the work that the board is doing. So one of the things that you received in your board book is Policy BQ Local. That's a draft that we've provided. That really outlines some of the work you as a board are required to do, which is determining the roles and responsibilities of key district stakeholders, including the superintendent, central office staff, principals, and teachers. So per policy, that's something that we have to really line out with approval from the board. You know, what is the expectation for the superintendent and district improvement planning? What is the expectation for principals, teachers? And we must do that with engagement of the Academic Advisory Council. So that's our district-level planning committee. So some of that I'm going to talk in just a minute about next steps, but you did receive that BQ Local draft, and we'll talk about that further in October and November. What you also received was an improvement planning process timeline. Like I mentioned, we began in our department to develop a comprehensive needs assessment in July. We've been building on that. We've met several times as an executive team and also a group of district-level leaders to really dive into the data, knowing that all of the data that we have in the needs assessment is not all we need to be adequately informed. So we are currently, as we speak, our directors and chiefs are utilizing additional data to help us determine the most appropriate performance objectives and strategies. So what are the next steps? In October, we're going to discuss more in depth that Policy BQ Local, asking for feedback from the board in order to take that feedback and bring a revised draft at the October board meeting, the business meeting, and ask for approval of that. In November, we'll be bringing those regulations I spoke of, where it talks about the roles and responsibilities of our key district leaders and our AAC, our principals, teachers. And we'll also be asking for the board to consider approval of our district performance objectives and campus performance objectives. So that's to come in November. And the reason that that is on the November board agenda is because we must engage with that AAC, and their first meeting is in October. And so that timeline flows nicely to make sure that we're engaging the support of the AAC, and they're actively involved in the district improvement planning process. So like I mentioned, one of the key pieces, a critical piece of the district improvement planning process is conducting a thorough needs assessment, utilizing data. And so with that, I'd like to flow into the 2015-16 STAR performance and accountability update. That's not all of the data that we utilize for the, for the needs assessment, but is certainly a primary piece of that. So what I'm going to overview today is our ratings as a district in all of our campuses, also provide a briefing of the performance indexes, our distinction designations that we recently received, the results of our system safeguards, as well as our 2016 STAR So currently, there are two ratings that a district or campus can receive, and those ratings are improvement required or met standard. So for 2016 accountability, which is the 2015-16 school year, Fort Bend ISD earned a district rating of met standard. We also had ninety-seven percent of our campuses earn a met standard rating, with two of our campuses or three percent receiving an improvement required rating. So those campuses are Briargate and Ridgemont. And Dr. Phyllis Hill will follow my presentation with an overview of 2015-16 TACE, what we did last year, kind of an overview, as well as discussing 2016-17 TACE plans for our two campuses. What I'd like to highlight here on this slide, and I apologize if the font is a little small, but we have a core four index system for accountability. And so what you see on this chart is a comparison of two years, 2015-2016, of each of our four indexes, or indices. It just depends on, the state sometimes refers to it as an indices, but I like to call it index, indexes. So the first one is student achievement. That's the easiest one for us to calculate internally. That's simply all of our tests for all students combined for one score. Our district target for 2016 was a sixty. Fort Bend ISD earned an eighty-two, down one from an eighty-three in 2015. Index two is student progress. So the majority of our students are measured on a STAR progress measure. What that looks like is it measures our amount of students that are meeting or exceeding progress from the prior year on STAR. So that target was a twenty-two, and for 2016, you'll see that we earned a forty-two in that index, which was up two points. So that shows that we're growing our students from one year to the next, that two points, I think, is, it shows that we're, we're doing a lot of good work. For index three, that's closing performance gaps. So what that always looks like for the district and for campuses is it looks at our two lowest-performing race/ethnicity groups, as well as our economically disadvantaged student group, and it looks for improvement over last year's performance. And what that looks at is of your two lowest-performing student groups, as well as your economically disadvantaged student group, it's looking at the amount of those students that are meeting at the level two or earning a level three advanced. And so that target was twenty-eight, and the district stayed the same from fifteen to sixteen and earned a forty-three. One of the things I didn't mention, I'd like to go back for index two, is that index does not, it does not matter if a student is successful at meeting the standard. A student can be unsuccessful at STAR but still meet or exceed progress. So that's something interesting to note. Index one is about the number of students actually passing STAR. Index two doesn't have anything to do with passing or failing. It's measuring growth. And now, we're back in index three to looking at how many of our students in those three groups either passed at that level two or earned a level three advanced. So index four is the post-secondary readiness index. And so there are a lot of different measures that go into that, particularly for high schools and for districts. Those include the number of our students earning at that level two recommended standard that doesn't kick in until 2022, the amount of our students that were graduating, what types of plans they're graduating on, and also some additional post-secondary factors like CTE coherent sequences, the amount of AP courses they're taking. So that target was sixty this year, and Fort Bend ISD went down two points and earned a seventy-seven. I'd like to take just a minute to speak to distinction designations. These are awarded to campuses or the district for outstanding achievement in specific areas. So the district only has one distinction designation they can earn. I believe that's post-secondary readiness, and we did not earn that. That's a very small number of districts across the state of Texas. But our campuses do have what we call campus comparison groups. So that's forty like campuses that they look at based on grade level served, so your campus type, the size, your enrollment, the percentage of your students who are economically disadvantaged, mobility rate, as well as the percentage of your English language learners. So there are a total of seven distinctions, although elementary does not have the academic achievement in social studies since that is not a STAR-tested area for elementary. So for that, we had forty-four percent of our campuses earn at least one or more qualifying distinction designation, with four of our campuses earning all eligible distinction designations. And those campuses are Clements High School, let me pull this up, Fort Settlement Middle School, Colony Meadows Elementary, and Commonwealth Elementary. So those four campuses earned all eligible distinctions. And in total, for Fort Bend ISD campuses, we earned a hundred and eight total distinctions, which was up from, I believe, ninety-six from 2015. An additional piece of our accountability system is the system safeguards. And I provided the confidential district system safeguards report, I believe, in your board book last week. But the purpose of system safeguards is to make sure that low performance from one student group is not masked by high performance in other student groups. And so what we are charged with doing as campuses and district is if we miss an area of a system safeguard, we must address that as part of our improvement planning. So as a district, we earned, we met ninety-two percent of our system safeguards. We did miss seven, and so we will be addressing those in our district improvement planning process. And so, one thing I would like to highlight is campuses and our district must meet a target of sixty percent in all student groups and all subject areas. However, if a campus receives Title I funding, they must meet an additional target. This is a federal target in reading and mathematics of an eighty-seven percent, and this will be the last year that we see that. But we do have seven that we will address. We're doing some great things, but that will be when we bring forward the district performance objectives. In November, you'll see that we're addressing those missed safeguards, call those out specifically. And so for this last chart, I'd like to highlight a STAR performance from 2015 to 2016. One of the things that I didn't mention when I was discussing the four key indexes is student standards increased this year for the first time, and they will increase every year annually until 2022. And so what I have provided for you today is in all students, all subjects from 2015 to 2016. But I have noted in the 2016 column that STAR standards did increase in 2016. But we're going to provide you, this is just a very general overview this evening, but I wanted to highlight two things that you can expect in the next few months. One of those will be a year in review through a board update by September 30th, so that's coming very quickly. And what I mean by year in review is we're going to provide you data and information for all of those state assessments that we tested in the 2015-16 school year, as well as we're going to review in an October workshop, the comprehensive review of data. So what you've seen today is just a broad overview by district, but what we're going to provide in October really will call out our different student groups, different grade levels, to provide you a comprehensive overview. And so with that, I'd like to welcome Dr. Phyllis Hill. She's going to provide an update of the TACE plan overview from 2015-2016, as well as what our TACE planning looks like for 2016-2017.
Good evening, Dr. Dupree, President Tassan. Tassan, pardon me, and board members. Before we begin tonight, I would like to acknowledge the new staff and new leadership here tonight to represent Ridgemont Elementary School. If they would please stand. And Dr. Shepherd and Dr. Villarreal are here. Dr. Villarreal is the Assistant Superintendent for Ridgemont. I don't think he stood, but I want to recognize him. And now, if the new leadership and teachers at Briargate would please stand with their Assistant Superintendent. I want to point out that they all stood at one time, and I'd written a note to myself to individually recognize them. And that cohesiveness that you see with them standing as a group is the way they have been all summer and into the fall. It is truly a network of improvement out at Ridgemont and at Briargate. This evening, I want to first say that usually, when I give a board presentation, I'm looking forward to it. There's information I am looking forward to sharing. And while I am very energized by the Edge model and the new instruction and practices and staff and the energy that I see at these two schools, and in fact, we had the professional service provider required by TEA come and visit Ridgemont this last week, and I had a conference call with her Friday, and she was very excited and shared with me many, many positive things. And while I'm excited about the future and what I see as the energy around the improvement, I'm very disappointed, and I think that we share in responsibility for coming to you tonight with a TACE plan, because that is not what we plan, and that is not what our students deserve. Every child deserves to become a good reader, a good problem solver, a future scientist, and it is our responsibility to provide an education that gives them those opportunities and the best leg up that we can possibly provide educationally. So while I hope to provide a good overview of these, and we'll be coming in October with greater detail, I want you to know that I'm disappointed to have to provide that. We'll begin with the TACE plan. What is TACE? It's the Texas- It's the Texas Accountability Intervention System, and it's required for any school that is rated by Texas Education Agency as improvement required. And as Dr. Evans pointed out, both Briargate and Ridgemont were rated improvement required, and this is the second year. Because this is the second year, the district has also embarked upon a bold plan independently and not required by the state called EDGE, Educators Dedicated to Growing Excellence. And with that came new staffing, new instructional models, new leadership, new social and emotional support, even facility changes. And we'll talk about how those two plans overlap with another campus improvement plan, and the campus improvement plan is required for all schools regardless of whether they're Title I or not, or improvement required or not. Every public school in the state's required to have a campus improvement plan, and there are certain requirements for those. In the TACE plan, the TACE plan is developed specifically to address the areas in which this campus failed to meet the state's standards. So it focuses on third, fourth, and fifth grades, and it's developed with what we call the CLT, or the Campus Leadership Team. That would be the campus administration, campus leaders, interventionists, teachers, people that can come together to determine what the needs of the campus are and plan for progress. The Educators Dedicated to Growing Excellence, or EDGE, plan puts into place things such as restorative discipline, the fit teaching model, new staffing. And one of the things that, as we get into an overview of the TACE plan, and as you look at these in your folders tonight, you will see flexible grouping. Flexible grouping is a component of the EDGE, and I'd like to use that tonight as an example of how these three plans overlap. It isn't three different things that campuses are overburdened to do. EDGE truly meets many, many of the interventions and improvements that we need to help our students and to support our teachers. In flexible grouping, which is one of our EDGE components, the professional learning communities or teachers, that would be the master teacher, the mentor teacher, and the EDGE teacher, meet together, they study students' progress or data, and then they determine who is the best teacher. It might be the one with the best science background, if they're addressing science or math, and who is the best one to address students' needs. They use the data to group the students, and the whole team owns the student's progress, not an isolated teacher. And I think that that is a big difference. That planning overlaps. TACE, it's part of our EDGE implementation plan, and it will be in the campus improvement plans. And so that's an example of how those three plans overlap. In the TACE plan, strategies are called interventions, because the entire plan is an intervention plan. These are the components, and you might want to look at a sample plan so that when you review it, you have an idea of how they're placed in the template for you. These are not due to the state until October, and now in October, we'll be having a public hearing and going into more detail. The CLT, or Campus Leadership Team, begins with a needs assessment, then they determine what is the problem, what is causing our school or our students not to meet the state standard in this area. That boils down to a root cause. In the root cause, you'll note throughout these plans for both Ridgemont and Briargate, quality Tier One instruction is the root cause throughout the plans, and we'll be focusing on improving that. There's an annual goal. So when we implement all of these strategies across four quarters, what do we hope to accomplish? And that is the data point. Our guidance in developing these TACE plans is different than the campus improvement plans. They're not data-driven by quarter. In fact, they tell us not to do that. But to focus on the root cause, which is adult actions and systems, and improve those systems, then students' learning will improve. Then quarterly interventions are indicated with the evidence, and so how will we know these are happening? As you review these plans, you're going to see greater detail and a lot more monitoring evidence and a lot of shared accountability for monitoring that evidence. We are beginning to work on these plans now, so while they're due to the state in October, I don't want you to think that we're waiting until October to begin implementing this support. As we look at learning from our past, one of the things that we see that happened in 2015-16 was that although interventions were put in place, although the actions of plans were carried out, they must be carried out in a way that results in progress. And if that's not occurring, then something else needs to be done. And the overarching problem was improving the Tier One instruction, and we have to have the leadership that will provide that adjustment. If we don't meet our quarterly goals, then we cannot make progress on our annual goals. And as we look at both of these schools, they did not meet their annual goals, but they did make some progress. Briargate met the index standards, for example, for index four, but it decreased in the other three indexes. Ridgemont, on the other hand, met the standard for index two and index four and made progress in every index. When we look at why the difference in these two success factors, Tier One instruction is at the forefront. As we look at the 2016-17 TACE plans, as you recall, I talked about the needs assessment and prioritized needs, and we have to focus on what, where are we not meeting the standard? Where are we not meeting the state standard? For Briargate, that's science in fifth grade, reading in all the grade levels, third, fourth, and fifth, and math in third, fourth, and fifth. And you'll see that reflected in the copies of the TACE plan. For Ridgemont, Ridgemont is focusing on writing and then math and reading, but where Briargate's focus was on science, Ridgemont is on writing. And we can see that as a bilingual campus, since writing is the highest level of literacy. When it comes to improving instruction, the Rand Education Foundation did a study, and I thought this was an apropos quote, "When it comes to student performance on reading and math tests, a teacher is estimated to have two to three times the impact of any other school factor, including services, facilities, and even leadership." So as we close tonight, I would like to thank the board for their support and their investment in the EDGE model. It was a dramatic move. I think it is very promising, and I want to commend the leadership and the staff represented here tonight. I'm very excited that we're getting off on a very positive start, that that has even been acknowledged by our TEA representative, and we look forward to coming to you with more detail in October. We're providing this so that you have a time to review and to ask us questions as you review this on your own. Thank you. Now, at this time, Beth Martinez is going to provide you information about District of Innovation.
Okay, so just a couple of closing thoughts. There've been some changes to the rules for becoming a District of Innovation or pursuing the, becoming a District of Innovation, and we'll be providing you detailed information about those changes in an upcoming board update. What I do want to just remind everyone here, and of course, as board members, you know you adopted the resolution to become a District of Innovation on August the 15th. Well, since then, the rule has changed, indicating that a school board has, excuse me, a school board has 30 days in which to hold a hearing after the adoption of a resolution. So as we plan forward and move forward, we'll be bringing the resolution, a resolution back to you again, so that we can ensure that we're within, based on the new rules, within that 30-day period of having a hearing scheduled and held. And then we'll be providing detailed information about any other rule changes, but that's the one I wanted to make sure that you're aware of, because it really does, at the point that we are at, at this moment in time, have the most impact on us as a district moving forward. So thank you for your attention this evening to these three very important overarching and integrated planning approaches for improvement and for strategic planning forward. We'd like to entertain any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez, and Dr. Evans, and Dr. Hill. We appreciate your work and appreciate the presentation. Do we have questions or comments from the trustees? Mr. Rice, are you not on? I can't see the, Mr. Burdine.
Oh, excuse, thank you very much for the presentation. That was very informative. I want, I had a question on slide number eight or page number eight. There, under the 2016 State Accountability Results, there shows the district target, which is way off from where we scored. Does district target mean minimum pass? Or is that, is that set by the state, or is that set by us, or?
So that district target is set by the state.
Okay, so it's basically a pass or fail number?
What index are you asking about? I apologize.
And all of them.
Oh, all of them. Okay, so there are metrics behind each one of the indexes, so it's not necessarily a pass. That is a target to meet. One of the things I didn't mention earlier is, in order to earn a met standard rating, and this might have been important information, a campus or district must meet index one or two and three and four. And so with that, that's the target, that's just the minimum. And so like index one, for example, that's simply, the easiest way we calculate that is it's all students that test, that's the denominator, and the numerator is all students that pass. And so that target is a 60. So essentially, the state is saying, the district target is at least 60% of your students must meet that level two satisfactory standard. And so we have 82% of our students that tested. So that is a district target. Growth, you can see that we are way, way off that target in a positive way from index two, the target being 22 to 42. But yeah, that is the state target.
I would like to see, I think would be, maybe that be named the state target, and then actually have a district target that we were trying to meet personally, because, I mean, I don't want to meet minimum, just an idea. Thank you for your time. I appreciate your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Burdine. That's an excellent point. Mrs. James.
Yes, Mr. Burdine, I agree. We should have student achievement targets that are higher than the minimum and that, yeah, encourage us. Okay, I have a couple of questions. Dr. Evans, you escaped the microphone so quickly. Well, I wanted to thank you for a very nice presentation, a good overview, and we'll look forward to getting more detailed information on, particularly, I guess, on the accountability parts of it next month. That's what I understand. So I wanted to kind of back up a little bit and understand a little bit more about the planning, the district planning and the district improvement plans and the campus improvement plans. And I'm familiar with campus improvement plans, having served on a CBLT, and know that every campus does one. And the district always does a district improvement plan also. You talked about this, though, in terms of a comprehensive needs assessment, and I want to just be sure that everybody understands what that is. So when you're talking about comprehensive needs assessment, it's really focusing on STAR data only, or is there other?
No, there are multiple measures beyond just STAR.
What is that?
And we've got like our SAT, ACT performance. I will, I will tell you that it's primarily student achievement data, but it's not solely based on STAR, STAR assessment results. And one of the things that our legal policy guides us is not only must the improvement planning process begin with that needs assessment, but they're very clear about ways in which we're going to kind of peel that apart. For example, gender, we must provide the results by gender. And I'll be very transparent, that was some interesting data that we looked at as district leaders last Friday, is looking at our STAR results by gender. So that was interesting. But the policy is very clear on what must be included in the needs assessment, and one of the things that we did on Friday, we met for our second round of district improvement planning for our central office leaders. We will engage the support of the AAC in October, like I mentioned. But one of the things that we talked about is there's no way to include all of the important data pieces that are necessary to develop a district performance objective in one needs assessment. And so that's what all of our district leaders, program leaders, were charged with really bringing and looking at additional data. For example, discipline is not one that's included in the needs assessment our department did, but that's certainly a very important piece that we would want to have a district performance objective for. Same thing with attendance rates, that's an important one. Looking at achievement gaps, that's certainly very much on our radar. And so it includes a lot of variety of data, but it's not enough. So we know that we're all looking at that as far as developing those performance objectives to bring to the AAC and then eventually to the board for approval in November.
Okay, so the, I've just got a few more questions around this, because you're referring to things, I want to make sure I understand. So you're referring to the comprehensive needs assessment. What goes into that is defined by policy, and are you referring to policy, the BQ, local policy?
Local and legal.
Local and legal. Okay. And does the, does that planning policy, in your minds, or maybe in the minds of everyone, refer just to this type of planning or to all district planning? In other words, is it focused on these district improvement plan, plans, planning? Or is it a broader policy? I'm asking that because when I read it originally, a few weeks ago, when I was getting started on vision and planning, I was thinking it applied to the whole planning process that we do as a district, recognize some needs for some changes, and I see you've brought some changes forward, but I'm wondering, how are we looking at that? Or is that a question?
Mrs. James, that's probably a broader question than Megan's area, but I would tell you, I think, I think.
I realize.
Well, I think you have got a good understanding of that policy. I'm not sure that the policy would apply generally or be intended from the legal legislative perspective to apply to all planning, but I think what you're describing is probably best practice to be able to do a needs assessment regardless of what you're planning for. So I think that the needs assessment is always a solid foundation.
Okay, and I kind of agree that I guess a needs assessment might take place in different forms. So maybe when we're revising the policy, we should be mindful of that, and if we need to focus on, for certain types of planning, certain types of needs assessments, or we want to prescribe that, then that's, or we just let the legal cover that and handle our local policy in a different way. There was some repetitiveness between the local and the legal when I was reading through them, so we can talk about this more next month, but I think it's, again, within the, if we're talking about vision, vision, mission, and district goals and objectives, then that, to me, is, you know, that's the planning process, that we're, that's the vision and planning process. So I just want to be sure we're saying, you know, all singing from the same score. Okay, so, so then let's back this up one step, because we're developing these district goals and objectives, or these, these performance objectives, and you talked about their alignment with the district goals and objectives. So how, what does that look like to you? Can you give me an example of that, or how does that work?
Okay, so.
Or do we just look at it as umbrellas or something, then?
I kind of, for me personally, look at it as an umbrella, and that's one of the things that, we provided that needs assessment with district central office leaders on Friday, and their submission to us is September 28th. And so from that, that's one of the things that, as a part of their development of the district performance objectives and strategies, we must align those with district goals. And so we have to keep that in mind as a guiding goal, if you will. So we're going to make sure that our district improvement plan, just like our campus improvement plans have been, are aligned with those district goals and fall appropriately under whichever goal that the performance objective or strategy is addressing. And so what we're going to do is, they're due on the 28th, and then we'll come together as a governing body, if you will, again, I believe in the first or second week of October, prior to bringing that to the AAC. We want their feedback as part of policy, which I'm sure you've read, they must be actively engaged. engaged in that process. And so we're really trying to do a lot of lead work in front of it, but we're certainly going to listen to their feedback and ask for what suggestions they have. But in my opinion, all of those district goals and objectives guide the work that we're doing for the district improvement plan, just like they did for the campus improvement plans.
Okay, and you mentioned also about the board's five priorities. How does that, how do those fit into that, into this planning process?
So that was the same thing. We had a discussion about that, you know, what are the priorities? For example, curriculum and assessment. So if we're seeing that for assessments, we're looking at checkpoints, how are we aligning our performance objectives where our students are not meeting their full potential? And how are we addressing that as a part of a strategy? That might be looking at checkpoints, ensuring reliability and validity, making sure that we're kind of putting the dipstick in throughout the year to measure progress. And so that's an important piece as well, is fitting in those identified priorities for 2016-17.
All right. Thank you for that. And I also wanted to say to Dr. Hill, thank you very much, Dr. Hill, for those words you said about Ridgemont and Briargate. And you are spot on in knowing that we care, and thank you for demonstrating that you care, and thank you, all of you, for being here tonight and showing your, how much you care because those students are counting on us. And we, we recognize that, and we are mindful of that. And, and the parents are counting on us, too, and really, our whole community is counting on us. So thank you very much for those, for your opening remarks. I appreciated them.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Mr. George?
Yeah, I share the same, same excitement along with my fellow trustees, and I, I see that we are making an effort to bring those two campuses to the level we like to see them and appreciate the new leadership. And then, and I have one question. How long these two campuses are categorized as improvement required? How long it has been?
This is the second year, Mr. George.
Second year.
Two years in a row, two consecutive years, but there has been a historical trend of coming in and out. They have been challenged in the past.
Okay, okay. And also, I am very excited about the Edge program, and I'm, I'm always looking forward for the result. And I know that it's working. I had conversations with some lead teachers in one of your schools, and you know, I think, end of the day, I believe in excitement, and excitement is contagious, and it's trickled down to, like Ms. James said, you know, these children are counting on us, and parents, and you know, and, and thank you for all that effort. And one more observation, it's interesting to see that four campuses met, all campuses met eligible, all eligible distinction designations come from the same feeder pattern. It is just pretty interesting to see that. So maybe they are doing something right, we need to copy in other, other campuses or other feeder pattern areas. So I appreciate, once again, I just wanted to say thank you, and thank you for the effort. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. George. Sure. That's okay. Go ahead, Mrs. James.
I have one other question with regard to the prioritized needs, you know, because of this improvement planning process, it's focused on the third, fourth, and fifth graders because of the, of the testing. But are there strategies included in the plans for the K through two levels to help with their readiness before we get to this point?
I, actually, my presentation was going a little long, so I cut that, but yes, there are. The district improvement plan, while the TACE focuses only on the third, fourth, and fifth, the district improvement plan has to address the total. So you might have school safety, classroom management, early literacy, things like parent involvement, those things involve in your district, your campus improvement plan, and indeed, they will be. Because we know that you can't just start with third, fourth, fifth. You have to build that foundation, and all students are going to need improved Tier One
And we do have some strategies in our TACE plans for 16-17 that do address our K-two learners.
Thank you. So I would like to echo Mrs. James's comments. I appreciate Dr. Hill, what you had to say in the beginning, and I'm not going to ask any specific questions because most of mine were already addressed, but I did want to say that I had the opportunity to visit Briargate last week, and I'll be visiting Ridgemont next week. And I was really blown away by the staff, by the teaching and learning that I saw going on in the school. I saw engaged learners, excited students. The data notebooks are very exciting to me. I love the checkpoint system that we have going now. I walked into a classroom and the students said, wait, 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 we need to show you what we've learned. And they have a cheer that's related to math, and I mean, it's the loudest thing I've ever heard, and they were so excited to share it with me, and to the point where they called me back in to come and see it. So I just see excited learners, I see excited teachers, I see kids that are proud of their campus. I'm hearing stories about parents that are engaged and, and are coming in and taking extra worksheets to help their students at home. And it's just very, very exciting to see that going on at that campus. So I just wanted to share that. I'm looking forward to visiting Ridgemont next week. I'm very excited about Edge and what we have in store for these campuses. So thank you for your work, thank you for the presentation, and I think we all look forward to seeing what we're going to accomplish this year. Okay, before we break for closed session, has Alfred Torres come in? No. Okay. So we are now going to convene in closed session under the Texas Open Meetings Act and the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, for purposes of private consultation with the board's attorney on any and all subject matters authorized by law. We will also consider personnel matters and purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. We are now convened in closed session.